Steven?
Yes, we're ready.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Leawood's Governing Body Session for this evening. The Governing Body will come to order and the Clerk will please call the rule.
Mayor Elkins is present and presiding. Councilmember Phylla?
Here.
Councilmember Sunkel?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Councilmember Gayad?
Here.
Councilmember Sippel?
Here.
Councilmember Harrison?
Here.
Councilmember Kane?
Here.
And Councilmember Castor?
On Zoom I think.
Is present on Zoom.
Dr. Castor, do you have your mic on? I think you may be muted. Can you hear us?
There we go. Oh, it looks like he's frightened.
All right, very good. I find that the entire Governing Body is present and a quorum is present as well, so we may move on to the business of the evening. If you could all stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. I have three citizens who have signed in to speak tonight, but I think that all three of them relate to a matter involving the Planning Commission that comes up later, so we'll save their comments until we take the question of the Future Uses Map and the Comprehensive Plan under consideration. I have no proclamations this evening and no presentations or rec-- well, why don't we do this first? Chief, I told you I wouldn't call on you until the department heads came up, but this seems like a good spot. I believe you have a presentation you'd like to make.
Brad Robbins, Police Chief. As part of our succession planning for the Police Department, we have named my replacement as a captain, and that is Jason Aring promoted from the ranks of our Sergeants.
Great. Jason, can you step forward? Welcome. We're very pleased about your promotion and we look forward to the leadership that you're going to give to the Police Department. Do you have anything that you'd like to say tonight? I know we've kind of am-- I've ambushed you a little bit here, but I gave you at least two hours' head notice.
Yeah, Mayor, I appreciate it. Council, thank you very much. I want to thank Brad for the opportunity. I've been here with-- for about 26 years, going on my 27th year, looking forward to the opportunity at hand. Got a lot of work I know I need to do, but I'm definitely looking forward to it. It's a great opportunity for me and hope I can fill some shoes that he has set ahead of me.
Thank you, Captain. Any comments or questions for the Captain?
How does-- how do you spell your last name?
It's A-H-R-I-N-G.
Well, thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. And Mr. Powell has given me the evil eye. I see I jumped right over. Does staff have any revisions or amendments to the agenda as it was published?
Yes, sir.
So with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda since I've already jumped three steps?
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I keep wanting to say Commissioner, so sorry. Councilman Sunkel, all those in favor of approving the agenda as it was published, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the agenda is unanimously approved. Now we'll move on to special business, which I have none of this evening. Takes us to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any Governing Body member would like to pull for additional discussion? Holy smokes. In that case, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as it was presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sippel. Is there a second?
Second.
I believe that was Ms. Phylla. Thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as it was published, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it unanimously and the consent agenda is unanimously approved. That brings us to my report, and I also have a very brief report this evening, which I know comes as a surprise to everyone. I'll note that on May 10, I joined the Leawood Police Department, the Chief and the Cat-- and the Command Staff, along with our School Resource Officers to enjoy and congratulate the sixth grade class at St. Michael's Parish School on their derogation. It was a really great event. Some amazing essays were read and they all enjoyed-- frankly, I would say they enjoyed perhaps more than the last class enjoyed Ms. Kansas. They enjoyed the presentation by our K-9 unit and they did a wonderful job. On May 14, I met with the City Auditors for our introductory session on scheduling. The City's Audit, their field work is underway. If you happen to come to-- into our side of the building, you'll see some very young people, very young-looking people anyway, sitting in our library conference room, and that is part of the field staff that has already begun. And on May 15, Councilmember or Governing Body Member Mary Larson joined me to welcome Whole Harvest, a new healthy plant-based restaurant on the north side of Town Center to the City of Leawood. Really exciting. It's a brand-new concept in culinary arts. And if, for no other reason, other than just to experience and experiment with plant-based food, you should see the space. The interior improvements are really phenomenal. They did a really nice job on their tenant finish. And I believe that completes my report. Does anyone on the Governing Body have questions for me? If not, that will take us to Councilmember Reports. Any Councilmembers have anything they wish to bring to the attention of the group? If not, takes us to the City Administrator's Report. I will note that my understanding is that Diane Miss Dodderd is doing very well and we-- she will be back, perhaps not at her desk, but will be actively carrying out her duties in a very short period of time. Steven, do you have anything to add under the category of the City Administrator's Report?
I don't.
And so that you all know, Steve is functioning on day-to-day activities as the City Administrator during her absence. That brings us to Committee of Recommendations, and this seems to be Mr. Klein's night for the Governing Body. The Governing Body will call Planning Commission Case 39-24, a resolution approving a final plan for a tenant finish for Park Place, the Axwa Bistro Restaurant located north of 117th Street and east of Null Avenue. Mr. Klein, does staff wish to be heard?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Just a second here and I'll... Bring up a... This application is for Expa Bistro. It's a French restaurant that's going to be located over in the Park Place Development, where the Pick 'n Finch used to be. And so currently, right now, they're proposing a number of changes. One of the things that they want to do is they want to have some outdoor patio. And so on the south side, they are proposing 40 seats as far as patio seating. And then over on the east side, they're proposing 16 seats that are kind of in between as far as where the trees and where a lot of the other restaurants have done. In addition to that, they are going to be replacing, as far as the awnings that are located on the building, they're going to be replacing them with black awnings. As you noticed, stipulation number two indicated that per the Leawood Development or per the Park Place Design Guidelines, the awnings are supposed to be eight foot six. When Pick 'n Finch went in, I'm not sure if it was just overlooked or if they got the numbers inverted. They were six foot eight instead of eight foot six. And so the applicant has indicated that they will comply as far as with the eight foot six. So that-- that way they're actually fulfilling as far as that stipulation. They're also changing the color of the building as well to a little bit more of a tan. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Klein? Ms. Phylla?
I-- there's no question. I would just make a comment that the folks in Midtown, when they heard that they were coming to Leawood, had heart failure. So the good news was they're staying in their former location. So there's a lot of people in Leawood are going to be happy.
Thank you, Ms. Phylla. Ms. Larson?
I just wanted to add on to those comments. We're very excited that this restaurant is coming, the Park Place. Their food is delicious and I think that the renderings that they've submitted for the changes on the colors and the awnings and I think it looks very tasteful and I think it'll be fabulous. And hopefully we don't have some seven-foot people that are going to run into the awnings. But we probably would have already heard about that, maybe if that were an issue. I don't know. But very excited to have this restaurant and I'm in favor of their changes.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Mr. Sippel?
Thank you, sir. Mark, do you know what their building plans are, what their target date for grand opening is?
That I do not. That might be a question that the applicant could answer.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Klein from the right-hand side of the dais? If not, Mr. Ewing, I see that your hand is up. I presume that you're representing the applicant this evening. If you could introduce yourself, we welcome you to the Leawood Governing Body, even if it is virtually.
Yes, hi. Can you all?
We can hear you gr-- well.
Okay, great. You can hear me okay? Cool. Okay, um, my name-- my name is Nick Ewing with Soul &amp; Palm Architects. I can answer any question you guys have. As far as I know, I think the opening date, a soft opening, will be June 6th, 7th, or 8th, around there, I believe, from what I heard from the client this afternoon, so.
Thank you. And Mr. Ewing, I know there was some discussion during the Planning Commission. Are you all comfortable with the stipulations that staff included in the application that was presented to us?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, the owner just wanted to make sure he gets approval and that there's no issues. He's trying to meet that target date at open, so he just wants to kind of keep things moving along, so.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Ewing? I will say, and you can-- you've already heard it from a good part of the City Council, that we are very excited about your clients coming to Leawood and to Park Place. And so we will look forward to that soft opening sometime in early June.
Yep.
If there are no other questions, do I hear a motion to approve Planning Commission Case Number 39-24?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Phylla, second by Ms. Larson. Any discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor of approving Planning Case Number 39-24, a resolution approving a final plan for a tenant finish for Park Place, Axwa Bistro located north of 117th Street and east of Null Avenue, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the motion is passed unanimously approving Planning Commission Case Number 39-24. That brings us to call a resolution approving the Planning Commission's recommendation to adopt the 2024 update to the Leawood Comprehensive Plan and MAP. That's Planning Commission Case Dash 22-24. Mr. Klein, do you wish to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
And we're going to pull up a PowerPoint here. This is the application that we have for an update to the 2024 Comprehensive Plan. We are proposing a number of improvement or number of changes to the Comp Plan. And I'll just kind of run through as far as what some of those are. Let me see if I can... Okay, the first one that we have is Hills of Leawood Villas. As you know, there's a street network that was proposed with that development. The development has expired, but we did want to kind of keep that street network there, especially since it was showing as far as the connection of 150th going over to Mission Road, which is this piece that is right here. The next change that we are proposing was with regard to the Aventino Development. As you know, originally that was the Velagio West Development. It was both a retail and office development, but it was shown on the previous plan as far as mixed-use development. However, now an RP2 residential development has been approved for that. That contains 63 lots. There are two pieces that are located within there, as far as there was a bank building that was located kind of at the southwest corner. And then also a small office building that was located on the north side of 137th Street. We've kept those as far as showing what they currently are zoned. So we changed the mixed-use development district to RP2 or medium-density or low-density residential with those two buildings being shown as far as what their current uses are, as far as the retail and the office. And then this one is in Village of Seville. What this reflects is that there's actually an apostolic church that is located within that building that is just right along 133rd Street. That wasn't designated before and so we decided to show that because we show all the religious places of worship. The next one that we show as far as updating the public road within East Village. High Drive is really the only public road that actually bisects kind of north to south. And the previous one, it was shown as how it just ran directly north-south. And this one, how it kind of veers off and moves a little bit to the west. So there's an offset in between the entrance into Willshire Place. Mayfair is at Regions Park. That development originally was proposed to be twin villas. However, the applicant came back and he got approved four townhomes that are about three stories. They're located in there. When they were twin villas, they actually had a public road that extended into that development. However, under the new proposal, the one that ended up getting approved, that was just a private drive now. So we removed that public street from Mayfair at Regions Park. On the Pastoral Dreamer site, it is located right over here to the west of where there's a small office building located here. Mission Trail Elementary is located a little bit further to the east. We did change that as far as making it office to match as far the small office building that's directly adjacent to it. It's such a small piece of property, it would be very difficult to do any kind of mixed use there.
Ms. Philip?
That is the one question I had. Can really anything be built there, do you think? Like maybe a one pad or something?
I think there's probably enough room to construct something fairly small in that area. Even a small office building or if you had another type of use that was in there that fit within that zoning district, I believe that it would fit. You'd just have to arrange it where it fit nicely.
Could it be retail or just office?
Actually, right now it's office, but you also have some special use permits. And so whatever is allowed with a special use permit could also be located on that side as well.
Okay, thank you.
Please, please continue, Mr. Klein.
And then probably one of the major changes that we have is we're proposing a new designation on the Comprehensive Plan called MXD-4. The 4 stands for maximum four-story or 60 feet, the lesser of the two. And we've designated that as far as by the area on the map that is the blue stripes. The red stripes indicate as far as the current mixed-use development district. The primary difference between these two, again, is the height. The MXD-4 designation indicates that, again, it can be no taller than four stories or 60 feet. There are some deviations that are associated as far as with the Leawood Development Ordinance Amendment that would kind of dovetail into this that we'll talk about a little bit later tonight. And then the mixed use that we currently have has a maximum height of 90 feet. And so we're proposing that the areas that currently don't have MXD zoning on them or they have-- there's that chance that they could change to MXD. We actually are having those designated as far as the RP4. So right here is Cornerstone Development that's located here. And we have heard, as far as some people have come in over the years, indicating that they would like to put some residential in there. It was shown as mixed use and so staff was always supportive of that. It's just that we haven't had anything to date. However, we have been contacted and there's still that opportunity that might be out there. Just to the east of that is Plaza Point. That development is more or less built out right now and it's pretty much all one-story. But if it ever did change, then we have MXD-4 on that. We have two pieces of property that are located right here and they bisect about right in this area. And both of them are currently undeveloped. Both of the plans that have been kind of approved on them have been long since expired. And so we do show that as MXD-4 as well. This is the location as far as where Mission Corner used to be. It was a development that came in. It was a mixed-use development. It ended up going into lawsuit. The plan is now since expired. And so, again, we always had shown that as mixed use. So we are showing that one almost also as MXD-4. This piece right here is a vacant piece of property right now. It was shown as commercial originally. There was a plan that was on it a number of years ago. However, it's long expired as well. And so we are indicating as far as that would be for MXD-4 as well. And then this is some land that is just directly to the west of where Regions Park, which is located right in here. That's those 81 units as far as twin villas and a few triflexes in there. And then also as far as 119, not 119, 135 Development, which is a mixed-use development that's located along here. This piece of property, these pieces of property do not have a plan on them yet, and so we're showing those as MXD-4. And then this piece of property that's located over here is-- there was a development that was approved a long time. I think it was Leawood Market Center that was located there. And you also have the Mad McFarlane Building that's located on the corner here. That one, again, the plan is long since expired and so we're also showing that one to be MXD-4. Now, when we talk about as far as the Leawood Development Ordinance that we kind of dovetail into this, that's where we'd ask-- actually talk about as far as there's some deviations that would be available to the property owners to request from the Planning Commission and Governing Body with regard to having additional height for such things as a signature building or if the elevation of the property was lower and so it didn't have quite that impact on the surrounding properties that are with it. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Ms. Harrison?
Mark, if a developer wants to do like, I believe, Mr. Peterson with Aventino, we would call that residential on what was once upon a time slated for some level of MXD. That can still happen if a developer comes and says, oh, this corner over here or this parcel over here, I want to do some sort of residential, I guess.
What staff would do is--
Low-density residential, I guess, is what I'm saying.
The Planning Commission and Governing Body have that ability to approve. However, staff would take a look as far as that future plan for City of Leawood, which is the future development plan. And since the Governing Body would have approved it, this is what we would be looking at. And so we would recommend denial of an application like that. And if you remember, as far as Aventino, we also recommended denial of that because it didn't match the Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan is a guide and so therefore the Planning Commission and the Governing Body have the ability to approve something other than that if they so wish. But it's really staff's position and our role as far as to try and upkeep as far as what the future development plan is. And so we've been pretty consistent in that in the past. And so that-- you would have that ability. Staff would probably recommend denial like we have in the past, but the Planning Commission would have the ability to recommend and the Governing Body approve.
Other questions for Mr. Klein? Mr. Klein, along those lines, as you were going through the parcels along 135th Street, there are some parcels that are relatively modest of size, in size if not small, for mixed-use development. And again, I understand what you just said, that this is aspirational and that it's certainly within the scope of the jurisdiction of both the Planning Commission and the Governing Body to make a decision different than this. But can you share at least at this point in time what staff's thoughts are about some of those smaller parcels that just don't lend themselves to a mixed-use development?
And you're talking-- are you talking about kind of this area that's located over here and then also right here?
Yeah, I think those are two of the ones that I think of. There are a couple that are much less than 10 acres, if I remember correctly.
Okay, there is a very small piece of property that's located right here. It's less than 10 acres. If you remember, the Leawood Development Ordinance has a requirement of a minimum of 10 acres in order to develop. They are allowed to get an exception to that because obviously you might have a situation where you're surrounded by developed property and there just isn't anything left. Or you may have tried to work with your neighbors, but they weren't interested in working with you and so they have the ability to bring forward an application. What we're trying to do is try and consolidate as far as as many of these properties as possible so we don't get situations where you might have more than one entrance kind of coming in off of 135th Street. We also want them to connect so you don't have like drive into one development, come back out and go into the next development. So it's a way of making things a little bit more contiguous and where they make sense. And so that's really the reason for that.
And I know it's dangerous to deal in hypotheticals, but would staff in that situation still take the position that because the Comprehensive Plan calls for mixed use, even in the case of the very small parcel, that you would recommend to the Planning Commission against moving forward if that particular owner wanted to do something, for instance, a commercial space of some sort?
We probably would still recommend a now, but we would bring up as far as the conditions that are under it to make the Planning Commission and the Governing Body aware as far as some of the challenges that are there. Of course, the planning staff is always hoping that, you know, we can actually get something that does meet those plans and those larger pieces of property.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Kane?
Thank you. I view this as a positive and long-incoming. This has been a zillion meetings, as you all read again, and I appreciate staff and I super appreciate Planning Commission because you guys sat there and read every single word. It was very clear. I think that, in my opinion anyway, this MXD-4 kind of summarizes what we've seen in the last, you know, number of years happening along that corridor. So to me, this better reflects reality. You read how long it had been since we had changed this plan or revised the plan. And then you probably read in the minutes that next year they're going to start the process of going all over again. So this is-- this, to me, tonight is kind of simple and straightforward, I'm happy to say. I did note on page 22, it talked about the population growth, but then I read in the minutes that they're flat-out saying it's just a projection, not a realistic number because that seems way off to me. And speaking of population, you probably also read that even the best estimate is we may have a third of our residents living along 135th Street. So that-- Mr. Elkins had heard up to 50%. I'd never heard 50% before, but I certainly have heard a third of our residents. So I think that this, to me, these changes tonight reflect what's been happening and then the wishes of Planning and City Council and residents and developers, as far as I know. But I know we have some speaking, but not along 135th Street. I understand you're all talking about closer to Ward Parkway, so of course you'll have an opportunity to speak. I do look forward for when some of this refinement is done starting next year because I think certain things like low-density residential and ownership, which are some of our priorities, are not reflected in this. But we will, again, we will have a chance to refine this even more. But tonight, it is, as he showed you, it kind of buttons up some things that have already happened. And so thank you for all your hard work. And again, Planning, which looked at this over and over and over and over. Not that we didn't, but they certainly did and I appreciate their hard work and your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
And legal as well, because you were all over this. I read your name over and over.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Mr. Sippel?
Mark, could you go back to the-- one more back? The one where you showed all of 135th Street?
I think that's the one.
That's not the one that caught my eye. There was a circular arrow at the southeast corner of Mission Road and 135th Street. I think that was on the Odo Villa Milano property. I didn't understand what that circular arrow denoted. It's not in front of us now, so that's immaterial. The second part of my question is, as you and your staff look at this, are you hearing any complaints or unnecessary comments from developers that we are still unreasonable with our expectations along 135th Street?
You know, we, we did have some property owners who, who were concerned with regard to, as far as they were being curtailed from as far as maybe the possibility of going ninety feet. Some of them, once we explained what was going on, indicated, I think there was a lot of confusion that this is zoning and it really isn't zoning. And so essentially the way that this would work is if it gets approved on the, the comprehensive plan, an applicant comes in to do a project, we would want them to rezone to what was shown as far as on the, the comp plan. If they chose to do something else, to rezone to something else, they always have that ability to do that. And they can make that application. Staff would recommend denial of that application based on the fact that it didn't meet as far as the comprehensive plan. However, the Planning Commission could recommend and the governing body approve as far as different zoning that they may be proposing. So this is not rezoning anything. This is just simply putting a designation as far as on the future land use map. And, and if I may, I did stop a little bit short. There is one other section that is located, this is around eighty-nine hundred and State Line, and it is located right along here. Currently, this is all shown as mixed use. There's actually quite a bit of topography changes that, that occur in this area. And since it's in close proximity to residential that's around it, we are also proposing that that be zoned, or not zoned. Shown as a designation on MXD four on the comprehensive plan. So we've taken account. It also has a lot of elevation change. There might be opportunities for them to come in and indicate as far as we'd like higher, taller buildings because there is so much elevation change, it won't have the same kind of impact. So I think that there's that opportunity as well as if you had a signature building.
Ms. Knight, I believe you had a comment?
Well, and this may not be the greatest time, but something to consider, I didn't really see the agenda until tonight, that you might consider taking this up after item twelve E, which is approval of the MXD four district. And then you can get into the details of that district. And then this would be where it's placed on the map. So to me, it's a little out of order.
Well, we're kind of there now. So we'll, we'll proceed with the decision on this, contemplating a potential change in the, in the zoning districts.
Okay.
Ms. Harrison?
On this slide you've got up right now, Mark, where, where are you? What number street are you?
Okay, about eighty-nine hundred. And so over here is where Ward Parkway is located here. This is East Vill- or Village East that's located here. And then I believe the eighty-nine hundred building is located in this area. And again, there's, there's quite a bit of topography change kind of in that area, with maybe the exception of this, this piece right here might not have as much.
Thank you.
Ms. Larson?
Just a couple of comments. Thank you, Mark, to you and your staff for all the work that has gone into this. I think it really reflects the goals and the conversations that the governing body had and, and the direction that we were wanting to go in. And I, I see this as kind of crossing the Ts and dotting the Is and, and kind of shoring things up a little bit and, and making a little bit more specific. And I look forward to further revision a year from now. But I think it looks really good. And I also want to thank the Planning Commission for their multiple conversations on this topic and, you know, taking it very seriously and, and thoroughly. So I would be in favor of the, of the changes to the comprehensive plan and, and support it.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Gaiet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The landowners that were concerned about this being limiting or too limiting after some further conversation and explanation, did, were-
Speaking to your mic.
Yeah, your mic may not be on, Sherry.
It's on. Hello?
Yep.
The landowners that were concerned about limiting their sale or developability of their property after further conversation and the explanation that you said there was maybe some confusion around it, were they understanding and they were okay with it? Or is there still some lingering concern?
Actually, they're here tonight. So they'll be speaking on their own behalf shortly.
And there was about fifty-fifty. We did have some people we talked to. And after we kind of explained what was going on, they, they seemed like they're all right with it. But there are some who still have concerns.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. King?
I meant to say while I was speaking earlier, sorry, that this does spell out the whole signature building concept we had talked about. And then it also allows an exception if there's terrain, which I think involves these gentlemen here. To, in my opinion anyway, you would fall under that category when you have the fallout or the floodwaters or, or that falls under that category. So I think it does a good job. I think you did a good job of spelling those, those two things out as well. And it also, the approval, the approval or the approval majority is lessened as well. Originally, it was reading three-quarters of the, of, of us would have to do it for, give, to approve something. And now we've reduced that down to two-thirds. So again, in my mind, it, it's lessening certain things and there is allowing for certain exceptions because there should be exceptions to these fine gentleman's properties here, which are case in point. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Other questions? Mark, if you could go back to the map of the Village of Seville briefly for me, please?
That one right there?
Uh, yes, I think so. So the, the, let's see, we've got the hospital there. And we've got the red. What, what is the, what is the comprehensive plan telling us as to the planned future use for the rest of that space where Village of Seville is? Is that commercial?
It's currently, right now, retail.
Retail, and that's, and there's no change to that?
No.
Merely putting the church in, right?
Correct.
And then can you tell us a little bit about, you know, we, and, and again, there were lots of things that went into why it is that we've had, you know, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four, that we're looking at these changes. But most of the governing body will recall that really that what we're doing here is the map. At the end of the comprehensive plan are, is really a statement of principles in terms of initiatives, goals, and, and executable actions. And, and that section's probably even older than two thousand nineteen. Can you share with us a little bit about what the planning department's thoughts are as to when it is that we're actually, because those, in my mind, those are really dated and, and we haven't really even looked at those yet.
And, and the last time that the comprehensive plan actually went out to the public to get public input was in two thousand. So it has been a while since we've been out. The goals and objectives are typically done at the time that you go out to the public because you get that feedback from the community itself as far as what those goals and objectives can be. So we do plan on starting this year as far as to go out to the public with a update, a complete, more or less overhaul of the, the comprehensive plan, where we'd be looking at, you know, all of the properties located in Leewood, including one hundred and thirty-fifth street corridor. Because I know that we also have the one hundred and thirty-fifth street corridor community plan that's part of that as well. And so we'd be looking at that as well as we have self-propelled Leewood that is, is part of the comprehensive plan. And so when we go out to the public, we're going to really try and pull those goals and objectives that they, they want to have. There'll be a number of public meetings that we'll have as far as to, to get that input. We'll consolidate that. We'll work with as far as stakeholders with regard to the homes associations, the developers, the property owners, business people, so that we kind of have a comprehensive input as far as to what goes into the comprehensive plan. We do plan on hiring a consultant to, to help us with that task because it will be quite an undertaking.
And I, I think that it's, not only will it be out to the public, but it'll be out to this body as well as the Planning Commission to actually be looking, some forward-looking type planning as to what our aspirations are as a city. Something probably to consider as we're looking at the strategic planning and, and one of the, one of the, one of the projects, if you will, that I'll be advocating as part of the strategic plan. And I think it's also, I know that sometimes this is controversial, but, but this is the right time for, to include the developing community, as well as the homeowners association. So I, I hope that we'll reach out directly to all those communities to, to have an opportunity to, to speak to these issues. Because it's, it's much better to do it, I'm upping my soapbox now, but it's much, much, much better to do it in this kind of a comprehensive plan exercise than in the heat of a particular project that's come before us that we're trying to squeeze into, you know, a plan that may be twenty years old or whatever the case may be.
Right.
I know I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, but just to encourage you as, as we go down that path. Any other questions for Mr. Klein? Well, if not, I know there are at least three gentlemen in the audience that wanted, want to be heard. I believe they're all primarily concerned with the change in the comprehensive plan and the future use map as it relates to that space along State Line Road. Mr. Gibbs, I'm presuming that you may wish to be heard?
Please.
If you could state your name for the record and your business address and how it's impacted by, by this proposed change, welcome to the governing body.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Phil Gibbs, Jr. with Continental Consulting Engineers at nine thousand State Line Road. I'm also a resident of Ward Four and our building is in Ward One there. We have owned the building since nineteen ninety, so thirty-four years. And we're the building with the red tile roof, kind of down in the valley, the low area of State Line, north of Rockers, but obviously on the Leewood side there. So we learned of this, this change through a letter to us about the MXD four proposed change on our property. And we certainly enjoy living in Leewood and participating in, in all the fun things that it brings. But we just wanted to bring before you this concern of ours on our building. You know, I, I did submit a, our comments, and it's in your packet on page three fifteen. Several, several, you've probably read it. But I just wanted to go over and give you a little color commentary on the concerns. We, the hundred-year floodplain that FEMA puts out on our property, so in nineteen ninety-one, the elevation was eight-sixty. In two thousand nine, it was updated to eight seventy-four point six, almost fifteen feet of vertical raise of the floodplain on our property, whether that's correct or not. So now we have a floodplain to deal with that reduces our footprint of developable area on our property. So, so if we can get the fullest and best use out of our property someday, it probably means that it'll be more vertical in nature because the floodplain will limit our area that we can do. We certainly don't have any plans to redevelop on our property at this time, but we're just kind of wanting to, to visit with you and, and express our concerns. So we also believe, as we've talked earlier, I've heard earlier, the additional height would be warranted on our property because it does fit with the terrain. We're down in the very low valley on State Line Road. Our first floor is approximately fifty to sixty vertical feet below the nearest resident to the south. So Dykes Branch Creek is our north property line. And, and we certainly slope quite a bit to the south upward. And so these great changes will, would lead to having to do a very unique solution, solution to make the, anything on our property, use the terrain and make it very interesting. And so height is, is a concern of ours in the future. We don't know what that would be, but, but just wanting to kind of reserve a placeholder that, that, that that would be necessary on our property. So basically, the one concern, we talked about that at the Planning Commission, what the one dissenting commissioner, McGurnan, said, he said that he feels like this action predetermines what is acceptable well before applicant requests zoning. And by accepting the change to MXD four on our property, staff will recommend denial of an application that does not line up with its land use. And then what happens someday? Should we come in with something that does address those things? We'd have to, A, get, meet with a deviation, then get a, a majority from, from you all. And yet we would not have a staff support going into that. So the path is possible, but we're just trying to, you know, what effect will that have on our ability to develop someday? Just a concern at this time. So we just, we feel like Leewood does have a lot of proper controls in place already. And they ensure development that's very complimentary to the residents and the forward vision of the community. And so we, we would like to see our property remain just MXD rather than having that four associated with it. And in this particular exhibit on the screen, we're the very south tip of the crosshatch. We're south of the little creek in there. So I don't know if I can point. There's the creek right here. That's Dykes Branch. So we're the very south tip of that. So we just would rather see MXD on our property remain rather than going to the MXD four. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Mr. Gibbs, Senior, do you wish to be heard?
I'm Phil Gibbs, Senior, and I guess I bought the building nineteen ninety. And we've really enjoyed being there. Our staff right now is eighteen civil engineers, electrical engineer, and surveyors. And we've been involved in some really neat projects, including Iron Horse, Albrook, and, and, and the park on four thirty-five there. I just wanted to bring a story to you guys. And Lisa's depending on me to tell a story.
Good storyteller.
Now, this story happened is May the eighth on our property. My daughter, who kind of runs the whole damned office, she calls me, she said, Dad, there's somebody out there walking around in our parking lot. And I'm up on the second floor and I look down and I said, that's a pretty good-sized guy. I don't think I'm going to go tell him to leave. No, I know. So I said, well, I won't call nine-one-one, but I'll call the police department. So as soon as he calls, the police department, said, we got a fellow that's walking around in, in there. He's got a black satchel and, and he's got his ball cap on backwards. And Dad doesn't want to ask him to leave. So they said, well, we'll be out. Well, they were out in about five minutes. Leewood Police, in five minutes in our parking lot. He started talking to this gentleman. He never got within six foot of him. And five minutes later, another police car came. I thought, wow, what's going on? Five minutes later, another police car came. Three officers talking to this dude with the black satchel. I thought, well, you know, I watch TV. And by then, I'd have him in handcuffs and looking the satchel. These guys are a lot more patient. They, they've been trained. Twenty-five minutes later, a lady pulls in in a car, pretty good-sized lady, but she is nice-looking and she's well taken care of. And she walks over to this gentleman and, and he starts waving his hands and all this kind of stuff. Well, this guy, you know, I didn't know if he was suicidal or what. Now, it started at four o'clock. And finally, after about five o'clock, she went to her car. And she come out and she gave him a blue satchel. And it had apparently food and maybe some cosmetics or something that he might need or something like that. And finally, he walked over to Missouri at five-thirty. It took four people with a lot of patience to ask that gentleman to at least go to Missouri. Now, I don't know what his problem was, but I want to thank the police department for being patient with him. I don't think I'd have been that patient for a guy who was, for an hour and a half would not leave our property. And I, I don't know what kind of training that is. And I asked one of the officers, they said, well, this lady helps us and she helps in Prairie Village and Leewood to come out for mental situations. And I'm just amazed. And I'm so glad. Now, that's in your Ward One. And I live, our office is in your Ward One. And I live in Ward Two. And I'm really proud to be part of this. But I'm upset a little bit about you guys cutting me down on this building of which I've owned for, for thirty-four years. And you just say, well, you can't build it over four. My neighbor's got, he's going to talk to you about that from, from Denver here. But I think he's already five levels. But I think, and that's, that's why I came down. Phil did a better, a lot of better job than I did. But I always have to tell at least a story anyway. But thank you guys.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gibbs. And we appreciate that compliment in the, the way that the police force works with our, with our mental health professionals as well. Mr. Adams, it seems like Mr. Gibbs has introduced you. Mr. Adams, it seems like Mr. Gibbs has introduced you, but do you care to step forward and introduce yourself and your address as well, please?
Hi, my name's Fred Adams and the address would be effectively eighty-nine hundred State Line. I am from Denver, specifically Greenwood Village. And I would say that one of the reasons we invested in Lee Wood specifically is the history that you guys have of good stewardship, of creating development plans, things that work, make sense, continue to add value in the way that you guys want. I live in an area in Greenwood Village, which is very similar. Somewhat in contrast, I grew up in Houston, Texas, where in our little area right next door, there could be a seventeen-story building, which fortunately didn't happen because we made some other changes. But all that to say, I'm a general proponent about, you know, good planning and I'm all in favor of a, of a good, strong, comprehensive plan. To that, to that point, I'd also add that as owners of eighty-nine hundred, we're, we're good stewards. And as you guys know, that we were quite involved with Johnson County wastewater in that case twenty-seven twenty-four that was heard in March twenty-sixth, and that we got together not only with nine thousand State Line, but also with Mike Fishman, who is now on the planning commission. And we worked collectively avoiding a, a public city hearing to work with JCW and get an approval and a plan that, that worked well. And as you guys know, you know, the projections are to save over a hundred million dollars over twenty years for that pump station, which we did not, we chose to work with and not fight. Additionally, I would say that over the tenure of our ownership, we've paid over a million dollars in property taxes, well, well over. And so with that, we are glad to be part of the community. We contribute and we want to keep contributing. And with that, to a certain extent, I would summarize it as that the creek's rising and the sky's falling. With the floodplain that Phil Junior already explained, you know, that has changed also during the tenure of our ownership. And then what I would submit is that a reduction from ninety feet to sixty feet without having, with having then to come before the planning commission. And here, to, to do that is effectively, it is a diminution in property rights. And it also adds to what I potentially see as redevelopment, you know, growth potential and the value of, of the property. I would more specifically say that, in my opinion, some of the items that respectfully Mr. Klein and the other folks talk about, and again, you guys are doing a good job to, you know, make it a public hearing, but that, one, it's a small property, two, it is a, there is a buffer between our property and the new residential area. So those two things would prevent a canyoning or slash tunneling effect. And we have the pre-existing buffer that people have requested. So I feel like those also kind of argue in our favor not to reduce it. At the same time, also I talked at length with our counsel, Kirk Peterson at Poznan Alley. And he does have some concerns about the definition of the topography exemption. And I read through the minutes and there, and without having to bore everyone and go into some of the details, but I'm a little confused about what the deviation on the topography says because at one point it is Commissioner Carlberg that says, so if it, there's a decline, the people, the developers can build it to where it can be bigger or higher than the limitation in Mr. Klein. Maybe, you know, misspeaking, I totally give, you know, benefit of the doubt on that. But says it can be higher or lower as long as it does not exceed sixty feet. And so i- in our opinion, there probably needs to be a little bit more clarity about what the topography exemption means rather than just, you know, pushing it through right away. And let me make sure I, I didn't miss anything. I guess my final point would be this is that we are fine with some kind of, you know, comprehensive plan. The sixty feet, I did have a developer come talk to us a couple of years ago. And their indication was that a minimum of kind of a five-story building would be needed. So I'm actually open with Mr. McGurnan, who suggested that sixty feet is too small. And he had initially submitted a seventy-five foot limit. We would be very open and would not fight or compete against the, like an MXD five slash seventy-five foot in the Ward Parkway area. It does seem like the one hundred thirty-fifth corridor, you know, the, the sixty foot makes a lot of sense, but I do not think it applies readily to the Ward Parkway area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams, we very much appreciate your comments. Mr. Klein, so could, could you expound a little bit on staff's view that both the one hundred and thirty-fifth street corridor and the State Line corridor that we're talking about, both merit the limitations of the MXD four as opposed to leaving State Line at MXD and applying the MXD four, which I understand from council, we don't, we haven't really established that zoning district yet. But for these conversations, can you tell us a little bit why staff believes it's appropriate to apply those same limitations to the State Line corridor?
Sure. Staff is looking at this applica-, or this particular location and seeing as far as the close proximity that we had to residential. As you know, with the pump station that went in with Johnson County wastewater, there was a lot of concerns and that was a relatively small building that, that was going adjacent to it. We also felt that there was a lot of topography change in this area. And so the ability to actually get that deviation granted by the, the governing body and granted it would take a two-thirds majority vote. But they actually would have a, a good argument as far as depending on the design of the building and how they constructed it that would allow it to be taller than, than sixty feet. And I apologize if I had misspoken at one point. Really, the whole point of the topography is if you have a building and it's lower than most of the buildings that are around you, you can build taller than that sixty foot because you aren't going to have nearly that same impact if you were on the same level or even higher. And so we figured that this would be an indication as far as that there, there would be some flexibility that would be there. But again, also recognizing as far as the close proximity that we have to residential in that area as well.
And, and if an applicant was looking for that, I'm not going to use the right term, but that deviation, not in the technical sense, but that deviation, that topography deviation, would that require a two-thirds majority of both the planning commission and the governing body or just the governing body?
I believe the way it's written, it's just the governing body.
So the planning commission could have, could recommend approval on a straight majority vote, but it would require us to do a two-thirds majority?
Correct.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Harrison?
Thank you. Mr. Gibbs and Mr. Gibbs, I'm looking at your property on Google Earth, my favorite little toy. And if I'm understanding your, your quest, your request or your thinking in the future, your footprint is your building in your parking lot, right? Or do you own a huge amount of tree area around there that?
Yeah.
Three and a half acres. As I compare that to the current construction project further to the north, your footprint feels to me about one-eighth the size of, of that over there. And I'm think, so if theoretically, you're talking about a tear down and a new building on your site, not, not somehow adding a couple of stories to your.
Correct.
Well, two, what looks to me like a little two-story building.
Yeah.
It's very charming, I like it. But, and so you're suggesting that your site might support a four or five-story building, including parking?
Because of the, of the amount of land area, correct, to do a FAR of.
Interesting.
Tipple, yeah.
Okay, and similar.
It'd have to be tiered with the terrain, of course.
Right. And a similar question to Mr. Adams. So you're anticipating futuristically being able to tear down what you've got and build taller on the same footprint? And, and that's what you're concerned about, this restriction? It's not about you wanting to build on, on the parking lot, or isn't that a parking garage? Wait.
So that southernmost portion had just been part of the, right below the floodplain. Now it's part of the floodway as the creek is rising, right or wrong? One, two, yes, a developer and I had been talking and he was at a witch top. And the thought on that potential was, you know, we're, you know, a fully approved, you know, approved plan, but tear down and building some kind of a mixed-use deal that would have, you know, restaurants and.
I see.
The other thing I guess I would, I failed to mention is that the, the tennis club residential was built, less than ten years ago and in full view of the buildings that were already there. And so now that they're coming back and saying, you know, they're restricting our property rights, I don't think is a necessarily proper order of sequence in which things should occur.
My next question is about the water. Have either of you seen water in your parking lots in the last ten years? Ninety-eight? The big rain year?
I remember the Chiefs game where the, you watched the, it was on the Sunday.
Water coming down the stairs?
Water got up in our parking lot, that, now our parking lot is about, it's eight sixty-five for the parking lot. And, and they told us when we bought the building and the FEMA map was sixty. And the water was probably in the lower part, it was two foot. So maybe it got up to eight sixty-seven, that's the highest it's ever been there when we've been there thirty-four years. So, you know, the, the thing is that when we bought the building, you know, corn square was built. It was paved, it was developed probably ten years before, for then. And Prairie Valley's upstream has really not changed. It really hasn't changed that much. And yet every time the engineering study, and here I'm an engineer, but every time the engineer, up goes another two feet. And this, how many properties do you see that goes up fourteen feet from you, when you bought it to now what, what they say the hundred-year flow is? It's never been up that fourteen feet, it's been up about eight in, in that thirty years. So, but we're concerned that we've got the water, we got to address. And now you're saying, well, we got to pull this down too. We want to provide it to somebody and that value may not be us, but, because, and it won't be me, I'll be gone. But it may be him and, and your sister and a few other guys who want to build something better and bigger. And it'll be a signature building probably, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Other questions for staff? Yes, Ms. Philip?
I think the thing that concerns me most when we're talking about this, because I walk the trail down there across from where the, the pump station's going to be. And I can see on occasion in the fall or in the winter, your, your facility. I also have friends up on Ninety-first Street and I walk down that, that cul-de-sac, if you will. And I can look down on your property and I know exactly how the houses were built with the retaining wall and their height. And the office building there, I used to have a dentist in it. And then, you know, I've walked, I've walked to the State Line with eighty-nine, is it eighty-nine hundred? That used to be the sprint building?
Eighty-nine, nine thousand, we're just.
The sprint building, right. So I'm, I'm really very familiar with, from where you're talking about. And I, the back of the houses on Ninety-first Street, how tall would you have to be to get?
Okay, well, our parking lot is sixty-five, but that, the house right direct behind it used to be a professor at MKC lives up there. It's, it's about nine fifteen, nine twenty elevation. So that's over fifty-foot in elevation difference right there.
Right, right.
And then if you go to Ninety-second Street up there with the houses on, it's another fifteen-foot higher.
Right.
So it's, it's way up there.
Right, and, and I appreciate that what you're, I mean, I can see what you're saying about how you could put a taller building in there and no one's going to notice. And my.
It is a special deal.
It is.
These guys have studied thirty, one hundred and thirty-fifth street and all of a sudden I found out, whoop, we're included in this area. We got topography, man, we got sixty-foot difference in elevation. I don't think there's any place too well on, on one hundred thirty-fifth street's got that much difference in topography.
So I think that my concern is, is that the, the owners, the onerous nature that we put on the applicant, the, the property owner is that they have to get two-thirds of ours versus they have already extenuating circumstances. And there doesn't seem, see any process where we can expedite coming and saying, or, or maybe this is the time to do it, saying that this already has flexibility on it. So therefore, we can't, we can't take what's grandfathered into their history and take it away from them and then say now there's a cumbersome process that you have to come and get two-thirds of this after going through. I mean, that's not a, it's not, it's not efficient time and certainly the money spent to think that you go through that process and then a future governing body would say, we don't think so. I know maybe we'd like to have that right, but they also, it is a very unique situation.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Philip. Mr. Gibbs, you can step down. Yes, Ms. Gallett?
Sorry, thank you. We already know the challenges with this site and we already know that a taller building can and probably should be built there because of the topography. So I'm, I'm still a little confused as to why we're including this, these particular parcels in this MXD four. I understand it on some of the other parcels. On this one, I'm, I'm not sure to make it a much more cumbersome process for them to get, to get a new project approved in the future on there. I understand the topography deviation is present, but without kind of an analysis of what that would allow them to do. I don't know if we've got that, if we looked at, if they were to get a, the deviation, what would be, like, what would we even look at being approved? Could they ask for up to ninety feet? I mean, or would it still be the sixty foot?
I think with the, the difference in the topography, they could probably go up to ninety feet.
So then.
Just as far as that with, with, and, and really what we were trying to do, and so much depends as far as on design of the building when it comes in. And so we don't really have a chance to really analyze that until that, that actually happens. And so this is a way as far as to try and take into account as far as the, the residential that was adjacent. Because we have heard from the neighbors, not only as far as on the pump station, but also as far as on Village East that is located there. And that one is four stories and then it goes to five stories as it goes to the west. And so we figured that this would have an opportunity as far as to take a look at the project and that the governing body would have the ability to approve as far as a taller building, especially after seeing the design of it.
It's a higher threshold.
And, and, and that is true.
And if they were already allowed to build ninety and it would look like sixty, then, I don't know, it seems like too much of a burden on the landowner.
Ms. Kane and then Mr. Sunco.
If I understand the map correctly, the parcels in blue along one hundred thirty-fifth street are all greenfield, right? There is no structures on them.
Actually, there is, as far as Cornerstone, that one does have structures on it. And so as somebody would come in, as far as with residential to change it to mixed-use, that, that would be part of it, that it'd be limited to the four-story. I did talk with the prop, one of the property owners of, of Cornerstone. And they, we discussed that and he seemed like he was okay with it. But yeah, and I think they do plan on bringing in some residential, which is great because we've been wanting that property to go to mixed-use before. Plaza Point is also on there as far as they have some structures on it. And I'm trying to think, I think the majority of the rest of them are, are greenfield at, at this point.
McFadden on the corner.
Right, McFadden and there's also a bank at Chadwick Place that's located there. Both of, I think, McFadden, maybe two stories. And then the bank, I believe, is maybe two stories as well, one, one story, two story.
Well, and then both these, both of these parcels are definitely less than the ten acres. So they would have to, so I guess what I'm, I'm asking based upon these conversations and this input is procedurally what would have to happen tonight? Is there, is there something that we could decide tonight to, or is this going to have to be remanned back to? If we'd make any changes tonight, does it have to remand back to planning commission? Because personally, I, if, if there's a way to get this done tonight and come to some kind of resolution for these gentlemen, that, that would be my preference if we could get it done tonight. But I just, I don't know procedurally what we would be able to do this evening.
I believe.
Ms. Knight?
Just like any other recommendation from the planning commission, this is the same. You could override it with a two-thirds vote. So the planning commission recommended it as you have it. If you went to change it, you could make a change and then that would require a two-thirds vote and it would not require a remand. You also could remand it.
And the change could be to not make it mix four, just leave it as mix and that's what we have today.
For those two, for, for the, now are you talking about?
The State Line.
No, I understand, but are you talking all of it even though we're not hearing from these people? We're only hearing from these people.
But the, Phil, right?
But between the two of you, you're not, or are you? Are you ta, are, do you, between the two of you own this whole stretch?
We're talking just for us personally and representatively, nine thousand State Line and eighty-nine hundred State Line. I did reach out to the owners of. I did reach out to the owners of Twenty Twenty, Eighty-Ninth and Eighty-Seven Hundred, and they declined to attend.
Do they have the same topography issue, or is it?
Not quite as much.
Yeah, they're they're going uphill, um, they're going uphill, so they, um, so they very, well, in my mind, with all due respect, because you've been friends of Leewood for a long time, good friends and good stewards, I thought, I I automatically, my brain thought you would absolutely, the the um, the landscape, or the uh de- um, topography deviation, sorry, it wouldn't come out of my mouth, would apply, and hands down would apply to you. So, but I understand, um, it it adds um some additional labor, but, well, if procedurally we could do that here and here, I hesitate to do it up here because of the, for other conversation, but if procedurally we could do it here and here, I I would be fine with that because I would have, I thought you would have fallen under that 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 exception anyway. But I do urge my uh co-counsel that we, I believe we need to get this done, the rest of it done. I hate to, you know, kick it back down the road.
Uh, other discussion? I think we're two dis- oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sunkel, I forgot, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just have uh one clarification, this is only changing the height restriction, right? Where there's no other changes in the MX four from the the MXD, correct?
Uh, the only difference as far as is take, going from ninety feet down to sixty feet, except you have the abilities for the exceptions.
Great.
Other comments? Ms. Ms. Larson?
No, I'm I'm just.
I apologize, I wasn't sure whether you were raising your hand or taking your glasses off. Any other discussion or comments?
Well, I.
Oh, Ms. Larson.
I guess I would, do, on this map, can we distinguish the southern properties? Are we able to carve that out?
I believe the ones we're talking about right here kind of extend down here, and then the Twenty Twenty building is located uh in this area.
What was that first part? I was looking at my map and not.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, right, right in here is, I believe, the eighty-nine hundred building, and then as it kind of continues down, and I think, you know, Continental is down in in this area, and so is the building, office building that's located where the pump station went.
Ms. Philip.
And I I I appreciate you making the distinguishing uh comments about eighty-nine hundred and nine thousand, the office buildings, and obviously, they've just put in new um apartment and residential that are surrounding it. So, I'm I'm not ab- and then just to the south, uh, you also, by the Twenty Twenty building, south of that is another owner, right, that building? It's not yours? So, you have the eighty-nine hundred building, right, and then there's the BMO Bank? And then across the street from Eighty-Ninth Street to the south, is that your building as well?
So, I'm to the south, yes, ma'am. So, BMO is to the north of Eighty-Ninth, we're on the south of Eighty-Ninth. Um, Twenty Twenty, Eighty-Ninth is at the end of Eighty-Ninth, and um, so we are, as I understand it, um, so I believe this is Dykes Creek, right? So, I, this would be nine thousand, and then this is our property below this line. And then I'm I'm taking it that this is Eighty-Ninth and and everything below, above that.
Right, so.
Does that answer your question, I'm sorry?
So, are you having a problem with mix four for your property?
Yes, yes, ma'am, eighty-nine hundred is having a problem.
Because you might wanna develop to the south of it at at a, at a higher elevation, or you would tear down your building and build it higher.
Uh, I've been approached on on a re- a full redevelopment, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Um, I I I do understand what you're asking for, but I, I'm not sure that I'm good with changing that that process of going through an exception for that building, because it would be considerably taller if you were trying to do anything but what you have at a grade. You're, you would be above the Twenty Twenty building, and then my impression is, anyway, you'd be higher than the BMA Bank, and then you, if you tried to do anything upwards, you're now going to be out of scale with everything else on the, on state line.
I would uh suggest that we wouldn't be not be higher than the BMO building, and we would not be higher than the Eighty-Seven Hundred building, which is also right, right north of there. Twenty Twenty is tucked back and it's even lower.
Right.
Um, and so to that extent.
So, are you thinking you wanna go higher on the existing building than you have, or just take that height and move it south?
Um, well, two, two things. One, um, with this, but, you know, and again, nothing is, you know, it would all come before with some kind of, you know, pre-approved full plan, all that kind of stuff. The uh folks that approached me suggested that at the purchase price, it would need some, you know, a one more story of height to uh satisfy, you know, kind of the the investment and the redevelopment. One, two, um, regard, you know, at least then a a flat roof, you know, kind of continuous, rather than it stair stepping down, which is, which is the case.
Right, okay. So, that to me is still a question, but I definitely uh would like to exclude the property south of Dykes from that redesignation, and I I would.
So, is there any other additional discussion, Ms. Larson?
Just one thought is, is if we're gonna be readdressing this in a year, um, I think we've got some confusion as to where's what, and we maybe need to do a little deeper dive into this um property along state line and designating it as mixed four. I know I would like more information on to the, you know, as to the other. Um, I would just float a a test balloon that maybe we move forward with this, the Hundred and Thirty-Fifth property, but carve this out to readdress at a different meeting.
I agree. I kind of see a consensus built or building. Um, would you like to put that in the form of a motion, Ms. Larson?
Um, sure, I would like to propose that we approve the changes to the comprehensive plan as far as mixed four, uh, uh, except for the um property located along state line in um approximately the Eighty-Ninth Street area.
And that would also include the other changes that Mark talked about as part of the comprehensive plan as well, correct?
That is, that is correct, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel.
Does that motion require a supermo- uh override?
Yes, it will. Is there, pardon me, is there any further discussion?
The only thought I had based upon their conversation is they would be willing to stay to seventy-five feet as opposed to ninety feet. As I understand, that would be, if it stays mixed use, it could go up to ninety.
Stays mixed use, it could go up to ninety. Uh, currently, right now, we don't have a designation for the the seventy-five feet, just the the sixty feet, that would probably require another designation.
Just a thought. I mean, there's a big difference in my mind between seventy-five and ninety.
Any other discussion? If not, and Mr. Powell, you'll have to help me with the algebra here. Um, and this is still a resolution, but let's do this by a show of hands. Um, those in favor of the motion proposed by uh governing body member Larson that would accept the recommendation um of the Planning Commission with the, on the comprehensive plan, future uses of map, with the exception of the proposal to uh modify um the future use for those properties shown along state line, is that?
Correct.
Capture it? Um, please indicate by raising your hand. That is easy algebra, I can even do that algebra. Um, and uh, yes, Dr. Castor, uh, it passes on a unanimous vote. So, uh, Mr. Gibbs, Mr. Gibbs, um, and uh, Mr. Adams, thank you very much for your input this evening. We appreciate your time and your patience. All right, well, we will look forward to that, Mr. Gibbs. The governing body now calls, and apologies to um Ms. Knight, we probably should have had him in in switched order here, but I apologize for that. Um, I I, well, we're not even to MXD four yet, so uh, we call case number, um, Planning Commission Case Number Thirty-two dash twenty-four, uh, ordinance amending section sixteen dash two dash eight dot two of the Leewood Development Ordinance entitled FL Flood Hazard Overlay District pertaining to special flood hazard areas and repealing existing section sixteen dash two dash eight dot two and other sections in conflict therewith. Mr. Klein, do you wish to be heard?
Uh, yes, and and I'll just kind of introduce this case real shortly, and then uh, Mr. Lay may be able to better expand on it since it has a lot to do as far as more of the engineering part of it. Um, this application is actually coming before the uh governing body with the recommendation of the Planning Commission uh to update the requirements within the flood hazard overlays uh district that we currently have, or actually the flood hazard district uh that we have. Uh, the reason why this is being done is they're trying to make it match as far as what federal requirements are. And so, this is something that really kind of needs to to take place in order to make sure that those mesh, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Stipple, can we hold until?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Lay, welcome.
Yes, thank you. First off, I'd like to thank Marcy for all her, all her help on this. She spent a lot of time working with Daniel McMullin and the state on this. So, on the floodplain ordinance, it's actually created by the state and FEMA. They create a template, and the cities are required to adopt that template. You can make changes, but they have to be more restrictive. You can't make it less restrictive than what FEMA and the state has decided. And so, we took, in Twenty Twenty-three, we did take a lot of these changes to the Stormwater Committee to review and approve them. So, I'm just gonna go through those right now, it's kind of the big picture. Uh, so on the free board, on the first two, it's for residential and commercial. The state template has a one-foot free board, and so what that means is if a home or a business is gonna be built in the floodplain, the lowest adjacent grade has to be one foot above the base flood elevation. So, what we have in the existing ordinance and what we're proposing is to go to two feet. So, if any home, it just provides a better level of protection. Overland Park and Olathe have the two feet also, so it's not that much different than other cities. When the county developed these maps, the floodplain maps, they created a zone X, which FEMA does not recognize. And uh, the FEMA floodplain begins at six hundred and forty acres of drainage. The county went up to a hundred and sixty acres. What that does is provide a better level of mapping for us, but it's an unregulated floodplain. And so, we wanna make sure that we keep that as unregulated, so if the city wants to make changes in our codes, we don't have to go back, it, just on those areas, we don't have to go back into the floodplain ordinance to update it. On the next one, the designated review official, currently it's the Public Works Director, uh, we would like to have, include the designee in that, because we do have a certified floodplain manager, so we wanna have that person reviewing the applications. On the allowable base flood elevation rise, the state template allows a one-foot rise, so if you had a development come in in the floodplain, if it's regulated by the state, they could increase the flood elevation by one foot, and they would meet the requirements. Uh, City of Leewood, we've been a a no-rise for quite a while, and we wanna maintain that no-rise. Overland Park is also a no-rise, so again, it's consistent with other cities. One of the bigger changes is the cumulative improvement timeframe. Currently, we do not have one on there, and so what that means is we're looking at, we're proposing ten years. So, if you have a structure in the floodplain, if somebody comes in to do up to a fifty percent improvement more than once every ten years, they would have to actually bring that structure into compliance with the floodplain currently. You can do it one year, and you can come back two years later and do another fifty percent improvement and not meet the requirements. On the city, uh, the flood hazard overlay districts, this was kind of unique to us. We had a section where we were gonna have a map that showed areas outside the floodplain, and we were gonna maintain that map, and we were gonna manage it through the floodplain ordinance. Again, we want that removed, and we can deal with that in the city code separate from the LDO. Then on the last one, it's the letter of map revision on fill standards, so this is just more informational that uh FEMA wanted to include in the ordinance, and it's just a statement in there that properties can seek a letter of map revision on fill uh to help get their property out of the floodplain.
Uh, I s- I stopped uh Mr. Stipple, so I'll let him go first, Ms. Philip.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I just had some concerns, David, after Mr. Gibbs spoke of uh the increase in the flood levels down in his area. What did he lose, seventeen feet or something like that? Was that seventeen lateral feet? It couldn't be seventeen vertical.
Vertical.
Vertical feet, so he lost quite a bit of his parking lot. My question was, do we have many areas in the City of Leewood where existing buildings are located, whether they're residential or commercial, that are gonna be affected by the increase in the elevation that uh Mr. Gibbs experienced?
So, the uh, county's been updating the flood maps approximately every ten years, and so we're, they're currently going through the process right now. It's a new software that they're using, and so we are working, the cities are working with the county on those updates. And so, we will have much better mapping, probably it'll be, it'll get approved by FEMA probably in five to ten, somewhere five to ten years down the road. So, they do take a long time to develop. There are some areas in Leewood where they were removed from the FEMA floodplain, and they're probably going to be added back in, maybe sooner than later, so we're looking.
I know that Tomahawk Creek Parkway, you're gonna raise the elevation of that because of flood issues. But down there, uh, at Hundred and Third and State Line in that area, is there any other location in Leewood that would be susceptible to these conditions here?
Uh, well, as far as our uh ordinance, it's matches what, it's pretty close to what is already the existing ordinance, as far as that two-foot rise. But as far as modeling of the floodplains, that is gonna have an impact on certain properties, but we don't, at this time, we don't know which sp- specific properties. We're still working through that.
Okay, those would be the properties down around Indian Creek somewhere, I'm sure.
Right, it's gonna be along the Indian Creek through City Park and up Tomahawk Creek Parkway.
Thank you.
Ms. Philip.
Uh, I just wanted to verify, this is what we covered with a lot more detail in our Stormwater Committee, and we all were comfortable with what you have here. So, um, I think uh Councilmember Harrison said she's always amazed at the education we get at every Stormwater Committee, and this was one of them. We didn't know, we didn't, what we didn't know, so now we know, and I'm not sure any of us wanna try and explain it, but we were in concurrence after a long tutorial in that meeting, so uh I appreciate all the thoughtfulness that's gone into it. We really are leading the the pack in terms of how we are dealing with this and what we already had, and what we're exist, and what we are proposing.
Thank you, Ms. Philip. Ms. Larson.
Um, I just wanted to reiterate that from the Stormwater Committee, that we have some wonderful um volunteer engineers who were comfortable with the, this proposal, and as a non-engineer, that always helps me to sleep better at night with the leadership of David Lay, and then our engineer volunteers, who were all signed off and gave this a thumbs up.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Ms. Harrison.
Thank you. Marcy, I have a question for you, I think, um, in that, I mean, hearing from Mr. Gibbs and Mr. Adams today, I'm seeing this from a different perspective. You know, we have landowner, landowners along Hundred Thirty-Fifth, or in this case, along a hundred, our state line. I own this property, and now you're tying my hands, I can't build. Well, I understand that, I mean, I guess we are, but we also aren't in the business of having people build in a floodplain. And so, I'm sorry that you bought land that was, what, dangerously close to a floodplain, or uh, the floodplain evolved near your home? Or, I mean, are we gonna get residents who are? We're not in a lawsuit position because I can't, the golden rule criteria, I know I'm fumbling for my words, but this is confusing to me. I can't develop my land, I can't make money off of my property because of your restrictions about, in this case, two feet, when the federal government says, oh, one foot's enough, you're making it overly difficult for me. We're not gonna run into that, are we, with people? I mean, are we safe?
Well, I can't make any promises. Um, I mean, on a, in terms of, anyone can sue anyone for anything.
Well.
But, and this is no change, we've had this on the books, Mr. Lay can tell you how long this has been, but I, the state did approve this ordinance, and typically, that's not.
The state proved the ordinance, approved it, you're saying?
Yes, the, I forget the title.
The Division Water Resource, so before we could even go forward to the Planning Commission and City Council, they had to agree to our changes, and that's where Marcy and Daniel McMullin were working together with the state to get these approved.
Okay.
And that's in the first paragraph, section A one, approval of the draft ordinance, it was approved February twenty-third by the state. So, even though, like, like Mr. Lay said, we can be more restrictive, we can, and it was approved by the state, so I think we're on solid, non-flooding ground.
This is, this is the, uh, pretty similar to the other cities, so we're not the only city. This is, this is pretty similar to the other cities, so we're not the only city in Johnson County requiring the two-feet freeboard on that.
Right. It had it really occurred to me, as both of these gentlemen implied tonight, for example, redevelopment of property. I mean, like, we can draw lines and go, oh, well, nobody's in the floodplain. Well, now they want to build bigger on their property, and now they can't build bigger. Well, I mean, in a way, it's like, yeah, sorry, you can't maybe necessarily build bigger, but anyway, so it's just, it's eye-opening to me to hear a different, you know, I hadn't planned for redevelopment of existing stuff.
This is a unique situation downstream, under state line road, it's a fairly large box culvert.
Mm-hmm.
Once you go further downstream, there's about a twelve-hundred-foot-long box culvert that Kansas City, Missouri built that's way undersized, or a developer built, and so that's what's causing these backups, but that was built back, I believe, in the seventies. So, that's causing the problem. But we also had upstream, we had States of Old Leewood, which was able to develop in the floodplain, and they were able to fill, so they went through the studies and showed how they could develop and not create a rise.
Oh, they did a bunch of fill?
Yeah, States of Old Lewood, yeah, they had that twenty-foot retaining wall.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Phil.
I just kind of wanted to reemphasize that we are not doing, the existing ordinance in our city is the middle one, and, you know, the designated review official, that's not a big deal, and the state is actually on the idea where you have the cumulative improvement timeframe. They're recommending that we have a time, a timeframe, and that's why we had the engineers debate the ten, you know, what was the right number, and that's where we came up with ten years. So, we're making one, the flood hazard on the next to the bottom, it's now matching the state, so we're not being more restrictive, and we've discussed, you know, we're kind of doing what the state has asked, and Marcy's helped us with that, so this is really not an apples and tapples with what we just covered.
Thank you, Ms. Phil. Other questions for staff? If not, is there a motion to be had?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Phil, second with Ms. Larson. Any discussion of the motion? If not, this is an ordinance that recalls a roll call, so I'd ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Sipple?
Aye.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember Phila?
Aye.
Councilmember Gayad?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Castor?
Aye.
The vote is eight to zero, and the ordinance is unanimously adopted. Or the governing body, I'll get there, the governing body calls, now calls case, Planning Commission Case Thirty-four dash twenty-four, ordinance amending section sixteen dash four dash one dot three of the Leewood Development Ordinance entitled permitted accessory uses buildings and structures pertaining to residential emergency generators and repealing existing section sixteen dash four dash one dot three and other sections in conflict here with. Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This application is before you at the request of the planning commission with regard to, as you know, you see residential emergency generators come before you, and currently right now, they're, if they're over twenty-two kilowatts, then they're required to go back through the planning commission and governing body for approval for a landscape plan. When we talked to the building department, they indicated as far as that they noticed that really the twenty-two, the twenty-four, and the twenty-six, or the twenty-six, yeah, all pretty much have the same decibel rating. So, they're approving things administratively that aren't really any louder than what we're taking through as far as the planning commission city council. And the other qualification as far as for the trigger to come through the planning commission and governing body is forty-eight cubic feet, which we almost never meet as far as, it's always usually the kilowatts that they're doing it. When we looked a little bit further at it, what we kind of determined what was going on is that the twenty-four and the twenty-six kilowatts, essentially, they needed a higher amp as far as to kick on the, the equipment or the utilities of the house, so they had to have that higher amp in order to do it, whereas the twenty-two is a little bit lower. And on the table before you, you can kind of see as far as for twenty-two kilowatt, it's ninety-one, and then twenty-four, it's a hundred, and then twenty-six is a hundred and eight. But if you look at the decibel ratings, they're pretty much as far as straight across the board, the sixty-seven decibels. There is one that we had actually tonight on the consent agenda that was actually twenty, or sixty-eight, so it was one decibel higher that's located there. We also talked to the building department to see as far as how many of these emergency generators were failing the test, because we do always have that stipulation in there that says that they'll be tested at the time that they are installed, and when they're tested, they're tested at full power. They also require, they also go through a testing every week of about twenty minutes. However, that's at a lower decibel rating, and that's also where you can see that in the table. A lot of times, that decibel rating is lower than the sixty decibels that we have as far as sixty decibels to the property line. Now, granted, most of these are located as far as they take that measurement at seven meters or twenty-three feet is where they determine as far as how loud it gets, so that's sixty-seven decibels is at that twenty-three feet, and so is the fifty-six decibels for the testing part of it. And so, generally, we're proposing this change to actually up the threshold a little bit since we have a lot of these generators that are being approved administratively that have the same decibel rating that we have on ones that are coming back before the planning commission and governing body, and so that's really what this, this application is for.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Questions for Mr. Klein? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark, what did you say, that how many times do these have to be tested to satisfy the neighbors' noise requirements?
I think they're allowed to test them like twenty minutes each week that they can, they can test. And again, it's at a lower decibel rating. When we talked to the building department, they said they've never really had any complaints with regard to the testing of them. We asked them how many of them had failed. They indicated that by far and away, the majority of them pass, and if they're, and some of the instances where maybe they did fail, they were able to add to some additional landscaping that, that took care of as far as the...
But what's the frequency of testing?
I'm sorry?
What is the frequency? How often is a newly installed unit?
I believe it's like twenty minutes each week is that they would...
Each week?
Yeah.
Forever?
So, I, I think that's typically when they...
That seems onerous to me. I mean, it seems like once you pass, you ought to, maybe once a year or something.
Oh, oh, no, not the city testing. This is something that the equipment does every week as far as just to make sure everything's in working order.
Oh, okay. That's a whole different thing. This is a noise decibel testing thing.
Oh, yeah, that would be a lot, yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Klein? If not, we'll move to the discussion. Ms. Larson?
I was going to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Phil, a discussion of the pending motion? If not, this is amendment to the Leewood Development Ordinance that requires a roll call vote. The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Sunkel?
Aye.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Castor?
Aye.
Councilmember Sipple?
Aye.
Councilmember Gayad?
Aye.
Councilmember Phila?
Aye.
I have the vote as eight to zero, so the ordinance is unanimously adopted for the modification to section sixteen dash four dash one dot three. Thank you, Mr. Klein. The governing body now calls case number, I've lost, oh, there it is, thirteen dash twenty-four A, B, and C, ordinance amending section sixteen dash two dash six dot four and sixteen dash three dash nine and adding a new section sixteen dash nine dash two seven four A of the Leewood Development Ordinance respectively entitled MXD Mixed Use Development Deviations and Topography pertaining to the creation of a new zoning district, MXD four, and related regulations and repealing existing section sixteen dash two dash six dot four and sixteen dash three dash nine and other sections in conflict here with. Mr. Klein, one more time.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this application is before you, and it relates to the comprehensive plan update that we had talked about before with regard to, the comprehensive plan now has a designation of MXD four, four stories or sixty feet in height, the lesser of the two. This is actually the development ordinance that would roll into that, and so this would be the zoning district that would fit within those properties that are designated as MXD four. And so, really, the only change to the bulk regulations of the MXD district that we currently have would be to the height. So, the MXD four is only changing as far as height from ninety feet down to sixty feet or four stories, and that's pretty much the limit as far as with regard to the zoning district itself. There are a couple of other sections that we are changing as well. One has to do with the deviations, and the deviations, as we talked about earlier, currently there is a deviation that allows as far as MXD districts to increase, have a deviation that allow them to go taller, and it currently requires a three-quarter majority vote of the governing body. This particular amendment would reduce that to two-thirds. It does keep as far as the deviation available to mixed use, which it currently has that, that deviation available, and then also to the MXD four district as well. And it provides the two deviations that we talked about earlier with regard to, if you had a signature building, then you'd be allowed to get a deviation if approved by the governing body at a two-third majority vote, or again, if there's topography and the building sat lower and didn't have quite the impact, you could go taller than that sixty feet or four stories to, because it wouldn't have the same kind of impact. And then the last change that we're recommending is on the definition section. We currently don't have definition of topography, and so we, we're currently adding, adding that as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Ms. Gayad.
Based on our vote that we took earlier on the future land use map, if in our, whatever future discussion we have regarding state line, if we determine something else should be in this, and then we approve this tonight, what happens?
If we approve this tonight, then, and it's determined that maybe that isn't quite right, or you want to make some adjustments, then it could always be, come back before the planning commission and the governing body to make an amendment that would address that situation.
Other questions? Mark, just help me with the algebra a little bit here. So, if a proposal for a deviation comes to us, and it has to have a two-thirds majority vote, as a practical matter, for this governing body as it's constituted, what would be the difference in the number of votes required between a two-thirds and a three-quarters?
I believe the two-thirds is six, and I believe the three-fourths is seven, so it would be one additional vote that you'd need for the three-quarter majority vote.
So, but the, the mayor doesn't count, right? So, you really should be working off of a eight-person denominator. So, three-quarters would be six.
And, and I believe that this is actually of the membership, so it's the entire membership of the governing body, the way it's currently, currently written, and so if anybody was, you know, absent that night...
In that instance, do I get to vote, or do I only vote if there's, if we're one short?
I think you can choose to vote. That remains the same, but it's based on the membership of the governing body. When you say governing body, the mayor's included. When you say city council, you're not counted.
I understand that part. What I'm not clear about is when I'm entitled to vote, because...
You can vote or not vote, but the number would be six for two-thirds.
So, I would be entitled to vote in that instance, because in other instances, under the bylaws, I'm not entitled to vote unless they're one vote short.
Yes, you would be entitled to vote because it's a vote of the membership, yes.
Okay, great. Any other questions for staff? If not, Ms. Larson, this seems to be your night to make motions.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Larson.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Any discussion of the motion? If not, this is an amendment, as are the others, to the ordinance and requires a roll call vote. Mr. Powell, if you would call the roll, please.
Councilmember Castor?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Sipple?
Aye.
Councilmember Gayad?
Aye.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sunkel?
Aye.
Councilmember Phila?
Aye.
I have it on an eight-oh vote, so the ordinance is unanimously adopted. Thank you, Mr. Powell, and Mr. Klein, thank you for your stalwart and your staffs. Please pass our thanks on to them as well for the work they've done on all this.
Thank you. They definitely did a great job.
Sadly, there's a lot more work ahead of them and you, so we'll look forward to that. Brings us to old business. I have no old business this evening, new business, I have no new business. Before we adjourn, I would just note the upcoming meetings, I think that these have all been approved. What I would bring your attention to is that on Monday, June the twenty-fourth, at six PM, the budget and finance committee, of which all of you are members, will be meeting, and to the extent necessary, will meet, continue that into Tuesday, June twenty-fifth. The other thing that I would ask is for you all to check your calendars, and not necessarily this evening, but in the near term, for July first, we're considering a work session for July first, which obviously is close to the Fourth of July weekend, and so would appreciate your guidance as to whether that's unduly burdensome. I think that we're contemplating perhaps a discussion of, of the consultancy report on the fire station...
Yes.
The needs of the fire department going into the future. Is that right, Mr. Powell?
Yep, the needs assessment.
Yes, Ms. Harrison.
Thank you. I have another board that I sit on that would like to meet on June twenty-fifth. What are the odds do we think that the budget finance would need to roll into two nights? It hasn't in my eight years.
I was going to say, I'm told in the last eight years it has not.
So, how are you feeling about?
Roll of the dice.
We can go as late as you want on the twenty-fourth.
There's no big suggest, new changes coming down, a new, a new way of doing things that you're thinking might take a little more time?
The only, the only new thing that I could think of would be restructuring some of our funds, which isn't going to be, shouldn't be too controversial. We are looking at possibly asking the governing body to establish a risk management fund to help pay for some of our insurance costs that we've seen increases in and manage that a little bit differently. In fact, we have a meeting tomorrow with all of our neighboring cities to talk about how we might be able to cooperate on insurance costs, but that's probably the only deviation from anything that we've done previously that I can think of off the top of my head. I can check with Don Kabi and ask maybe if he could do a little, if there are any other substantive changes that we're foreseeing, maybe we can send a little note out to everybody.
And, Mr. Powell, we might see if we, even though it may not come naturally, we may talk to Mr. Kabi about potentially adjusting the agenda, so we take that one near the front, even though it may not naturally...
Sure, absolutely.
...come that way in the ordinary course of budgeting. Any other questions for Mr. Powell? If not, thank you all very much. Great work session this evening, a lot to think about during the course of that work session, and a lot of great discussion tonight. Appreciate the way that we consider the, the concerns of some of our residents. So, if there is no other business to come before the council or the governing body this evening... We... (end of transcript)